Deputy Mayor Quinn? She's here. Mayor Moore?
Here.
We are on to... I'm sorry, I'm lost. Silent prayer, moment of reflection?
No.
All right.
We're six o'clock.
Yeah. Items for review by the city manager?
None at this time.
We are on to item B, special events application.
First application is the Fourth of July music associated with the fireworks. Second is a request from the Christopher and Dana Reeves Foundation to use the council chambers tomorrow evening. National Night Out, August 6th in Springwood Park. The Historical Society doing their annual art on the boardwalk on August 18th. SEMCorp requesting to rent Bradley Park on July 18th. Bethel AME Church requesting to use Springwood Park on August 11th. And lastly, the Fishing Club requesting city dates for March 8th and 9th for their annual event. Are there any questions?
I'll leave you with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
We're on to... I didn't get one. On to item C, items to be presented by Director of Planning, Michelle Alonso.
Good evening, council members and members of the public. I'm here to present to you tonight a request by a property owner, the property owner of 405, 407, 409 Sewell Avenue. This is a request to take the property of 405 Sewell Avenue at the Scattered Site Redevelopment Program Phase 1A Redevelopment Plan. 407-409 Sewell Avenue is an apartment building that was recently purchased by the current owner, and 405 Sewell Avenue is a vacant lot. When the Scattered Site Redevelopment Program Phase 1A was written, it wasn't a vacant lot, it was a house. And the redevelopment plan calls for the house to be rehabbed, or a new one-family structure to be put in its place. Because it's a redevelopment plan, a use variance cannot be sought. The only way to permit the parking lot, which would be accessory to the apartment building, is to take it out of the redevelopment plan area, or amend the redevelopment plan, but we're proposing to take it out of the redevelopment plan area because the owner of the apartment building will be going to the zoning board of adjustment to increase the density of the apartment building from 19 to 21 units. And there'll be a lot merger, and if the lot that would be the parking lot was to stay in the redevelopment plan, it can't be a combined application. The applicant is aware, taking out the redevelopment plan, it loses all the redevelopment powers, but that's fine because his intent is just for it to be a parking lot for the apartment building. What they had included in your packet are pages from the plan that would be either removed or struck, like on the chart, the 405 Sewell Avenue would be struck from the chart, and all the maps would be amended to remove 405 Sewell Avenue. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are on to item D, review of agenda items for the June 12th regular meeting.
The consent agenda, Resolution 2019-30, award of valued parking services for the City of Asbury Park. Resolution 219-31 is a special service contract for the public art. And 241 is a resolution approving special events. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Moving forward.
I do, I'm gonna hold them to the seven o'clock meeting, which we're running late just so we can get there quicker. So go ahead.
Individual resolutions, Resolution 2019-232 is improvement, approving the payment of bills. 233 is rescinding a resolution authorizing the purchase of an ATV from a different vendor. The previous vendor no longer sells the ATV, we actually vendor. 234 is a tire changer for the public records department. 235 is a reporting for a four of all housing consultants in the city. There was two respondents, the firm with Beth Mac Madison, Clark Hinton. Staff is recommending just viewpoint both so that we have options when we need to move forward.
I know, but Michael, I wanted to just, we've worked with Beth through me and Yvonne, and the committee has worked with Beth the entire time. I'm not sure that we need to have a second on there. I think we can just keep it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to remove Clark Hinton.
That's fine.
Great. And honestly, I meant to mention that before. I apologize.
236 is a change order number one for the construction of the basketball court project.
I have a question on that.
Cassandra Dixon is here, so she can ask you the questions. That's what you get for showing up.
Let's rock and roll, Cassandra.
That's fine, Michael, I'm always ready.
Yes, sir, ma'am, let's do it.
Jesse? My first question was, I'm not exactly sure, do we own that? Because every time we go to use it, we have to fill out some kind of form, or we have to pay for board education.
Well, the city actually doesn't have to fill out a form to use the basketball course because we're leasing that from the Board of Ed.
We're leasing it.
We're leasing it.
The agreement states that we have to meet.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
So we lease it for what? Just curious.
A dollar and five years.
Actually, I think it was about 20 years.
A dollar. Lease that land for a dollar.
I think it's a longer term.
And I think we're coming close to our 20-year...
Twenty-one or twenty-two.
We're coming close.
We'll find the leasing sentence, but it's a couple of years away.
So, thank you.
So who owns... The Board of Ed. It's the Board of Ed.
Resolution 237 is to grant revocable licensing for 623 Main Street, 8 Sewell Avenue. And...
A dollar.
...store that appeared in the last thing. Yeah. 238 is a resolution approving the final liquor licenses. 239 is a resolution approving involuntary disability repatriation for meal work. And 240 is Asbury Ale House liquor licensing. Is there any questions on these moving forward? And just due to time, I'm gonna skip over the introduction of ordinances, unless there's any major questions on any of them, since this is a discussion and we're here in the meeting. If there are any questions on... Thank you for being introduced.
I'll just indicate with regard to the first one, which is 2019-22. This, again, deals with easement requested by the Sun Thunder Bank for the 65 square foot area. They want to put a canopy above the countryway to the bank right across the street, and we're requesting making table at one more time. We have had discussions with their attorney, they do seem willing to convert to a licensing agreement, but we don't have it all finalized just yet. In the meantime, just like to request to be table at one more time.
We expect to have a final resolution by next year. And we're staffed recommending tableing the second reading of the decree for 2018-25 for the purpose of 9/29 Asbury. Negotiations are still not going with the cartex.
So for 219-27, this is the scooters? Right, that's the two. And we're doing an FAQ on that.
Yes.
Matters from council?
Okay, I'd just like to remind everyone that the Monday night free concert series began this past Monday in Springwood Park, and the series will go through until August 27th. And I'd also like to remind everyone that we have fireworks on July 4th at 9 o'clock on Second and Fourth Avenue Beaches. Rain date is July 5th. That's it.
Just one thing, I just want to, there were people that tomorrow night, it's the Asbury Park Board's education meeting, where they're going to be presenting the budget for the next year. So if anyone's interested, it will be at Bradley School at 7 o'clock, so there's an opportunity to have some input into what's being proposed, and also listen to what they're proposing for next year.
Jesse? July the 3rd, we're gonna start a movie in the park, at Springwood Avenue Park. It starts at exactly 8:30, Cassandra and Alicia will be running it. 8:30 is scheduled for free, good movies. Last year, I attended the majority of them, I thought it was quite successful, and people came out. But make sure you bring your own lawn chair and your blankets if you care to. Thank you.
So the city is also enacting a... The city is doing a guest permit pass, that you can get a guest permit in the zone in which you live, and that is in effect now.
Guest permit for what?
Parking.
Oh, okay.
On, thank you for the Fourth of July, and on July 6th in Kennedy Park, from 11 to 5, there will be a forum for grassroots cannabis. An afternoon dedicated to educating, inclusive festival atmosphere. You'll find seminars on medical cannabis, entertainment, refreshments provided by Cross and Orange, activities, and over 30 exhibitions. It's free to the public, and they hope a lot of people will attend. They asked me to read that. So, that's on July 6th, Kennedy Park, from 11 to 5. That's all I have.
Matters from the city manager?
Aye.
Matters from the city attorney?
None at this time.
Motion to close.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to open the seven...
Roll right into the seven o'clock meeting. The seven o'clock regular council meeting is called to order. We will please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection.
I will now stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a breathing and just as for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2019, posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're on to public partation. Do I have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Okay, open the meeting to the public. If you have a question...
Can I make a statement before my time?
No.
Well, you know, you just ran over 10 minutes.
Stop, starts with three minutes. Please.
Please come to the mic, state your name and address.
Okay, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. Here, Mayor, I have two police reports. One for a beer whiskey party you allowed at the high school on the 9th, and I want you to address it because no one's returning my emails. Here's one for the transportation center.
Can you speak into the mic, please? We can't hear you.
Okay. Did you hear the first part?
No.
Okay. Asbury Park High School, city council, police, firemen, beer, whiskey, smoking. I can't open it, I can't get any permit. So, I'd like to know from you, Mayor, who gave the authority. Here's the police report. Why is no one responding? At the transportation center, somebody allowed Asbury Distillery, a well-known lawyer in Asbury, I think owns it, to dispense liquor at the transportation center. I called New Jersey Transit, they said it's unlawful. There's smoking there, it's unlawful. No vapes, no cigars, no cigarettes, no whiskey, no beer, no nothing. It took place, and here's the police report. I'm not getting any response. At both these, one of these functions was the police chief, the fire chief, everybody, I think almost everybody except, I don't think Mr. Kendall was there, but everybody else was at these functions, you know?
I wasn't there.
You didn't show up at the high school?
No, sir.
Okay, how about at the transportation center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And was Asbury Distillery giving out liquor? Go ahead, yeah. You don't wanna answer that.
I'm gonna answer when you're done.
You will?
Yes.
That'll probably be...
Maybe I won't now because of your snidey mark.
You make more snide marks than I do. Let's be frank.
Okay.
Okay? It is okay.
Okay, frank.
Okay, fine. So now, here's a mold and mildew report from City Hall. I opened it and got the documents. The city manager received a lot of complaints from employees throughout the building and citizens of the horrific roof leaks here, and that it's making people sick. You've got people in offices with collapsing ceilings. They have catch buckets to catch the moldy water. And this council thinks it's funny. That's, that is the most ridiculous response by council I've ever seen in my life, that it's funny. And now here it is, level three in the code office, the hallway, and the zoning office, and the city manager did nothing about it except pay for the results. Level three, which means very unhealthy, move out. People in the court office are running dehumidifiers because they said their documents are getting mold and mildew all over them. Only got 23 seconds. That sign on Main Street, 1108, it's illegal. It's attached on a state highway to a JCPL pole. I've been in touch with both. The city manager keeps making allegations that he's got all the appropriate paperwork. Prove it. Let's see it. I opened it, he gave me some doctor documents last year, and doctor...
As far as your first question is the thing at the high school, Ms. Clayton said there's a board of education meeting tomorrow night. Take that up with them?
I intend to.
Okay. I can't answer for the board of education.
But the fact is, when I'm emailing the city manager, the city attorney...
I can't?
Okay, about a police report, and they're not responding. Okay.
Ernest?
Okay, next.
The second one about the transportation center is brought to mayor and council, was approved. I believe everything was done legally. If you don't think so, you can file police charges.
I already did.
Okay.
I can't.
Why you think the council thinks that mold is funny is beyond me.
Well, I mean, councilwoman, Deputy Mayor Quinn owns units in where I live. It's loaded with mold and mildew. I never see her...
No, 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 you were talking about City Hall. So why you think we think that is funny?
Because as I was mentioning it, they're like laughing.
Who was laughing?
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Okay.
So I was laughing at something Lisha Cassandra did.
Like what?
So, whatever. She knew that one.
Yeah, I know. Obviously, you weren't listening to me, right?
As far as the banner at 1108 Main Street, if that's the address you said, I believe all the proper permits were filed and the city manager gave you those.
All right, well, we're gonna have to proceed legally then, because everything you're doing, you think is legal and lawful, and yet, when you get caught on it, you take that position, well, we got insurance, we got lawyers. Well, good, but, I mean, we still not got the money for that protest you did against the legal...
Okay.
You don't wanna talk. That's what I mean. Cover, Ricky's home.
Said drive safe.
How do they move here, make your day? Oh, God.
Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I attended Monday night's planning board meeting, and that was so complicated, that meeting, with all the intricate things they were talking about. How can that panel up there know what they're talking about? If it wasn't for the taxpayer bringing a lawyer to explain things, we wouldn't have even known half of the things that went on. I'd like to know what the engineer, and what our planner, and what our city attorney's function is. They didn't say one word. They don't ask any questions, or they write them down and give them to somebody else? How come they don't talk and say what's wrong? Nobody knows where, why the water's gonna be pumped through the system that we have, the sewer system. I don't think it's a saltwater pool if it's not, you know, if it's gonna be pumped through our system. Nobody knows the size, except for John said he knew the size. I mean, like, everything is like such a big secret. Why is that? That's why these things are happening in Asbury. The planning board approves buildings going on top of buildings, and no parking, and no parking here neither. When does the public get results about all this stuff? This pool is gonna be a menace. I was for the pool in the beginning, but I'm not for it now, because it's a big secret about what's gonna happen here. How come the taxpayer has to pay an attorney to come here and question that engineer that didn't have too many answers? And I don't know if people that volunteer to sit on the planning board are really that knowledgeable of lighting and all this stuff that they talked about. It was way above my head, I'll tell you that. I don't know, something's gotta be done, because too many things are going on in this town with the planning board approval because of all those little secrets. The planning board guy, he was here, the planner, he gets paid a high salary, and so does that engineer. Nobody says anything. Nobody asks a question. What is it? I was really puzzled by all that Monday night. And I don't blame the planning board, but they, it's hard, you need engineers up there when you're talking about a pool. And that engineer was, of course, he was for I-Star. That's not right. You gotta correct that. I don't know how you're gonna do it, but you gotta have those, those people that are sitting here that we're paying, Insight, that engineer, he didn't have one word to say. And neither did the planner. What are they doing? Just taking notes and then talking it over with, I don't know who? It looked like a conspiracy to me the other night. They talk about corruption, that sounded like it, because of that pool. So how are you gonna correct that? I don't think you were happy, John, I saw your face.
Okay, thank you, Rita, you're done.
Huh?
I set your time's up, I'm sorry. The next planning board meeting, I think, is August 12th. At that meeting, you can express the same sentiments. I believe the engineer and the planner did ask questions and did give testimony, or ask questions, and both to the applicant and to some of the questions from the planning board itself. And as far as the planning board not knowing what they're doing, we have reports from both the engineer and the planner, and we're going through those notes, and we know this is gonna be a long process. I mean, this next meeting's August 12th, and there's two more witnesses after that. Then there's a counter witness, so, you know, maybe they're waiting for the questions to be asked at the right time. If you wanna come to the August 12th meeting and ask that question to Barbara Krazak, I'll let her know that you're coming to ask that question.
Well, I mean, I thought it was very unfair that a taxpayer has to pay an attorney to come to the meeting and ask questions. That's not fair.
I can't, I don't wanna say too much because I'm on the planning board, and I don't want the applicant to throw me off, and I don't want the people against it to throw me off. So, I'm not gonna comment on that, but nobody puts a gun to anybody's head to do anything.
Okay, I had another question.
No, you ran out of time. You go to, you catch your ride with Ernest to Long Bridge.
No.
I can provide some further comment, if you'd like, on that.
Go ahead.
So, Rita, I can provide some further comment on that, on a couple of the questions that you raised. So, interested individuals are not required to retain an attorney to appear on their behalf and question any of the professionals or any of the witnesses who appear at a planning board hearing. They are certainly, at their discretion, they may retain counsel to do that on their behalf, but individuals can appear on their own, and there is a portion at which time any interested individual can cross-examine or ask questions to any of the witnesses that have provided testimony, but it's not a requirement. And the council, as a whole, has no official role in any matter that's before the planning board. The planning board is its own independent autonomous body that is vested with certain responsibilities under the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law when it comes to land use matters. There are two members of the council who serve on the planning board, but the council as a whole has no involvement with it. It's entirely before the planning board. The planning board has its own professionals to provide guidance to the laypeople who serve on the planning board. If any of the members of the planning board have questions, they should seek the guidance of their professionals.
Yeah, but it looked like everybody was silent up there. I mean, like, they were all afraid to talk, especially the planner and the engineer.
Well, I can't comment to that because I wasn't at the meeting, but their professionals are there to provide guidance and to answer any questions that the planning board members have.
They didn't ask one question, either one of the planner, and they represented the taxpayer. And they get paid well, too.
Is that Clark Hinton, who was that?
Yeah, it's Insight, Clark Hinton, and they both did talk.
Yeah, 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 I'm not on planning board, so I'm not as up on who they hire for their professional services.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good day, city council. City manager, my name's Max Lapua. I've been working for the city as a member for 25 years. I'm a vet. First of all, that flag you guys got down to the bottom, and that B O W flag is against the law. They're to suspect me as a vet. I got friends that call me every day and tell me that flags should be in one place by itself, with a pole. It's on, in a pole. Therefore, please, take that flag off at the pole. If you guys don't, I will call...
Take your time, Max.
I will call the higher people to make sure you guys take that flag off. They suspect me as a human being in the United States. I'm not from here, from Haiti. Okay, I'm a citizen of the United States. This is hurt my, that hurt my feelings. I will, none of you, if you can't, I put that flag off. By next month, I will call the higher people to take it off. I'm done.
The flag is gonna come down at the end of June, the entire month is gay pride month, and the flag's gonna stay to the end of the month.
Please, wait, in that pool.
Excuse me?
In that pool, find that pool for a flag, please.
We'll look into that next year.
Not next year, I will ditch it. By December, if you can't do it, I will get it, I have to get it off. I'm done. They suspect me as a vet.
Thank you, Max.
God bless you, and I love, I love all of you.
And we appreciate, and we appreciate your service to this country. A lot of people don't know Max is a former Marine, and that is appreciated. Thank you.
Next?
Nobody else?
Sorry, yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Madeline Monaco, I live on Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. I just wanted to respond to your comments with the city attorney about taxpayers not needing to get a lawyer. We saw, say, Asbury's waterfront had to hire a lawyer at the planning board's insistence because we had an engineering report that we wanted to submit to the planning board as citizens, and we were denied being able to submit that report. We were told we had to get an attorney to submit. So the night before, the May 29th planning board meeting was when we got an attorney, because we had to. Next, I wanna thank the council for moving the chain link fences on North Beach off of the public property. Thank you so much for doing that. It looks so much better, and the public will have a lot more access to those areas and to the beach. I also have a question about the red trailer and the gray trailers that are over there. Are those going to be moved as well? I understand that the gray trailer is on I-Star's property. However, I-Star beautifies a lot of areas around this city, and I'm wondering why that area is being left as an ugly eyesore without the public being able to access across it for the whole summer season, when the planning board meetings are going to continue through at least September. That's our whole season that people are not able to enjoy the waterfront area. Even just walking by those chain link fences is obtrusive, they're obtrusive. The other question that I have is why, I've heard twice now from I-Star at the last two planning board meetings, that the council has not yet finalized the plans for the water, the boardwalk redevelopment on North Beach. And I'd like to ask why those plans have not been finalized, because we did have the big meeting in January where I thought the design was chosen, and now I don't know why the plans aren't finalized, and then when is that construction going to begin? And then my last question is, and I'm gonna ask this of you because it doesn't seem a vehicle to ask publicly questions to the planning board, but it seems that I-Star is getting a lot of access to the planning board. Now, we've got a meeting on August 12th, they paid for a meeting, a special meeting in May, and another meeting in September. I'm wondering if there are lots of people in this town who are waiting to go before the planning board, but it seems like I-Star is getting preferential treatment, and I'd like to have an answer to that. Those are my questions.
I'll take the last one first. No, they're not getting preferential. They asked for a special meeting, they asked for a special meeting in July. The way, I'm answering on behalf of the planning board, and just because I know, because I've asked Barbara Krasak, the chairperson, the same questions. There's two meetings a month. One meeting is scheduled for them, the other meeting is scheduled for anybody, everybody else in the town. Nobody's being backed up at this time whatsoever. So that's not happening. As far as...
I'm sorry, did you say one meeting a month is scheduled for iStar?
Correct.
And the other ones for... So that's policy?
Well, that's working right now. There's nobody, nobody's being backed up.
Okay, I understand.
There's, nobody's in the queue in October. There's nothing waiting before the planning board to hear that's being, not heard because of iStar.
Okay.
If that happens, then we'll handle that then.
Thank you.
Again, when I say "we," that's the planning board, not mayor and council. The red trailer is, contains the city lights in it, so the boardwalk lights. That'll probably stay there on that lot. The metal fence of iStar, I don't know, Michael, that's a legal question, I don't know if we can make them take that down or not.
It's their property.
It's their property.
So if I had a home and I wanted to put a lot of trash on my front lawn, it's my property, I'd be allowed to do that?
I think there's a difference between trash and a fence.
I wanted to put a big trailer on the front of my property. I'd be allowed to do that? The city wouldn't complain? If neighbors complained, would we have to, would I have to move that trailer off my front lawn?
Well, the red trailer's on our property.
The red is, but the gray is not.
The gray's, that's on their property.
Yes, no, I understand. And the chain link fence is all around their property.
So we're talking about the chain link fence, right?
Sorry?
Your question now is about the chain link fence on...
Chain link fence around iStar's property on the waterfront, as well as the gray trailer that's on the lot, I believe where the food trucks were.
Correct, and that's been there, that's, I don't think we can make them move that either. That's their construction trailer for their pool.
Which has not been approved, so it has to sit there all summer while we wait for approval?
Because it was originally put there to do the boardwalk nine months ago, and there's no sense in moving it because the boardwalk will get built soon. And it's for you, you have something about the boardwalk.
Yeah, I've heard...
The planning board, I don't, I think the comments were some to the effect, as per the plans, the plans have been done, the only thing that hasn't been done is the final crunching of the numbers and who's gonna pay for it. But the plans are totally done.
They're at CAFRA.
And they're at CAFRA.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Michael, did, anything else? Did we answer all, Madeline?
I think so, yeah.
Well, I'll also stand corrected with regard to the issue of hiring counsel. I didn't realize, and it could be that planning board's attorney had indicated that since it was an organized group and there was a formal report that was being submitted, that council had to be involved, but typically if there's a matter before either the planning or zoning board, interested members of the public are permitted to cross-examine witnesses and appear on their own.
But not submit expert reports?
So I guess I'll defer to the planning board attorney with regard to procedure.
Yeah, that's a new one on me, Madeline. I didn't know that was the case either till you just said that.
I have the emails to prove it, which is why we had to hire an attorney. We didn't want to do that.
Okay.
But we did. I'm glad I was here to correct the record for that.
Thank you.
And why don't you send them the emails, right?
Can you see it? Can you forward me those emails? Because I've never seen them. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Louise Murray, Grand Avenue. Are taxes paid on green acres, any green acre land? I have a question regarding that. If not, then if you, if the pool is gonna be built on green acres, how does that, what's the situation in that kind of a scenario? And the other thing is, you can answer my question when I'm done. I have to comment on Michael, Michael's new zone. I had an occasion to use the parking facility this week, I was so happy, I did it on my phone. I'm like getting so techie, I can't stand it. But anyway, it's nice, you can go from one zone to the other. If you park in one area, I've got my beach badge, then I just had to travel to the same zone, and I could just find another parking space and not have to pay again, and it was great. However, the signs and the sunlight are, the zones are light blue, and you can barely make them out. And coming into here tonight, I noticed that same situation. They have the zone of, you know, where you are, it's in light blue. So I said to Michael, "Michael, you gotta get out there and paint them a different color." But anyway, he's amazing, and he's good at what he's doing. So anyway, back to the green acres. I mean, of course, you know, can you answer my question?
I think the lot you're talking about is 1.23, that's owned by iStar, and it's not green acres. So yes, it is taxed, and yes, if there's improvements on it, the improvements would be taxed more.
We've triple-checked that lot, Louise, because Saul has suggested that, or members of Saul suggested that that is green acres, and we have nothing to suggest that that is green acres.
You're still, they're still saying that he, they own that property? I mean, I, I mean, did CAFRA come in and say, we're talking about the old Marine Girl site, right?
No, I'm talking about the old Seventh Avenue Pool site.
Oh, all right, that's right, you're talking about that, but I always envision something else. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay.
Good evening, Chris Georges, 917 Third Avenue. I apologize, I'm a little, I'm not up to speed with the acquisition and the ordinance with regard to the fire department, 929 Asbury Avenue. Is there still, has that been finalized?
No, sir, and it's gonna be recommended that the second reading be tabled tonight.
Okay, I don't know if it's the proper time for me to comment on that.
Certainly.
Okay. My first question is, has there other sites been considered by the city and the fire department for relocation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The reason why is, I know that's true, because I, it was a year ago, I approached Fire Chief Ketti, and only because I was amazed at how decrepit the current firehouse is. And I have a lot, I have two parcels of land in Block 302, and at the time I had proposed building a firehouse for the city, leasing, leasing the ground, or doing something to renovate and to relocate the firehouse. And I thought Third Avenue, this is Third between Memorial and Langford, it's literally two blocks over from the proposed site on Asbury Avenue. And I had approached the city manager a number of times, reached out, and never got a response from a proposal or an offer, you know, to either develop, sell the land, or do a ground lease, whatever. And quite honestly, looking at the gateway, which is Asbury Avenue, logistically, it would be far better, and it would be far cheaper, if three and a half million dollars is what's being offered for the property. I just would like to toss my hat into the ring and, you know, get a response from the city, because I never did get a valid response from the city manager. I was even looking to swap the properties where the current house is, I didn't know the condition. We never got things going. But anyway, I just wanted to express that, you know, and understand, maybe there's things that I don't know, I'm not quite familiar with the lot on Asbury Avenue, how big it is, and what the proposed site is, where they're gonna retrofit that old building. Anyway, I think I said enough, and you understand my...
You're doing fantastic, keep on going. No, and what's the address?
917 Third and 909, it's potentially a 30,000 square foot lot, if the buildings were knocked down. Well, one was knocked down on 909 already. It's across the street from the Super Extra, it's where Habitat for Humanity used to be. It's a wider street, Asbury Avenue.
Okay, now, okay, I know where it is now, okay.
Mr. Georges was, we actually had an email discussion at the end of last year about it. I said that we're not at this time interested in it. If other deals fall through, we'd be happy to revisit your site if it's still available. And he wrote back, "Okay, if you wanted to comp the sites to benefit your negotiations, assuming other deal is not near close, either way, keep me in mind." So we are aware of this site. We had this discussion the last year.
Are you Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
So we had this discussion on 12, June 12, on December 12 at 9:46.
Okay, so...
So I guess my question is, is what is advantageous to the gateway location, which is a very narrow street with tile lines, as opposed to the proposed, you know, offer that I was presenting for Third Avenue? I'm just wondering why. I mean, logistically, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, logistics, I'm gonna argue with you, but now that we're aware, Michael's aware, and we're not voting on the 929 tonight, and the purchase price wasn't three and a half million dollars, it was less than that.
This is public information with the contract or the proposed contract?
There is no contract.
There was no proposed contract.
And so, no, I'm glad you brought to our attention, and we'll start looking into it right away.
The offer's still on the table, I think it makes a lot more sense.
What do you want for it?
That depends, do you want me to build the firehouse?
We'll buy it from you right now, what do you want?
What?
Two million?
I, yeah, two million would do it.
Really?
I haven't been offered before.
I don't have the authority to negotiate, but Michael and Kevin, can we look into this? Because we're looking at all options and...
No, we never really got to first base. I mean, because I was also considering swapping for the firehouse, the existing one, to do a restaurant or to do something. I didn't know if it was a historic building, I never got feedback, I never got an offer, I never got an appraisal from what the firehouse would be selling for, because I know that's the plan now, as I read in the coaster. So I just never got off the ground with that. And, you know, it can make sense to the city, I think it, wherever, whether it's Asbury Avenue or Third Avenue, it's all power. See, I went into the firehouse myself, because I used to, I tried by it all the time, and I'm saying, "My God, this is a beautiful city, it's got the most terrible firehouse I've ever seen, from any state, from any city."
Okay, I'm gonna have to, the time's up, so I'm gonna have to cut you off, but I'm gonna also, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Chris Georges, George with an S.
Yeah, next time, don't wait so long to come. And we appreciate the information, someone will be in touch with you within 48 hours to see what you want to do and what we can do, and we'll start...
I'm willing to collaborate on...
We'll start the dialogue.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The city needs a, the city needs a great firehouse, the fire department does an amazing job the way they respond, and I was willing to build it.
Okay, again, thank you again, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jay Harmon, those who don't know me. I did hear the comments this evening about the firehouse, and fallen on the prior gentleman's comments. I own a number of properties on Asbury Avenue and Memorial Drive, and I did have the opportunity to meet with Michael and Kevin earlier this week after hearing about the pending negotiation, pending acquisition of the firehouse relocated in 929 Asbury Avenue. My concern there is, has the city done an impact study on property values and also quality of life values? Because I have a mixture of commercial businesses there, tenants, and also residential tenants, and have a sizable financial commitment on Block 403 and, I think, 402, the other side of Asbury Avenue. And I agree, that's a gateway into the city, it's a very busy street. The fire, the fire company is very active with, I think Kevin mentioned, over seven, almost 8,000 calls just in last year. So has there been a traffic study done or a impact study on sound, traffic, and what it will do to property values in the neighborhood if the fire company relocates there? Those are my concerns.
That's it?
Yep. Oh, one more, this one's easy. How come there is no planning board meeting in July?
There is.
I heard there wasn't, and I asked Michelle the other day on a matter that I want to get on the docket, and she said the earliest is September.
Again, that's not us, but there is one in July, July 8.
Okay, okay. So back to my prior question.
Okay.
Michael, I'm gonna let you answer. Any impact studies have been done?
No.
None have been done, we're still in the, still looking for a piece of property.
Okay. Okay, will there be an impact study done on the behalf of taxpayers in the neighborhood?
I wouldn't recommend it. That's a policy decision by the council, but I wouldn't recommend it, most of the properties there, other than Mr. Harmon's seven residential units or commercial. This site was chosen in part because of its lack of residential component, that some of the other sites have a lot of residential, especially single family homes. We didn't want to harm or negatively possibly impact that many residents. As I expressed, Mr. Harmon, when we met earlier this week, in the three and a half years I've been here, I've never had one complaint about the firehouse flooding a residential area. So we actually think this would actually decrease any quote-unquote pollution in the area, because it's, there's no residential that, that's what we have in progress.
Actually, to set the records, currently I have 10 residential properties that would be affected by that, Michael, and potentially two more.
You told us seven on Monday, you said that you're on a contract for the other sites.
Yeah, on Asbury, on that block.
What I also then expressed was that it was the parcel between the possible two sites, and that if it's possible, we would also be interested in exploring it to further protect the residents there, to acquire that so we can provide an even better buffer.
That's correct. There's also, I didn't mention, I also own properties across Asbury Avenue, which there's four more residential units. I'm sorry, five. So total, there's 11 and possibly 13.
Okay, so at this point, there is no contract, at this point, there is no action being taken. Tonight, at this point, we heard of another piece of property, at this point, those studies have been done.
Okay, good. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Motion to close, public?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're on to item F, minutes. I have the executive minutes of the June 12th meeting, I have the work session of the June 12th meeting, I have the council regular session of the June 12th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for their approval with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired by one or more of the council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have 2019-230, an award of valet parking services for the city of Asbury Park, 2019-231, a resolution awarding a professional service contract to further public art, resolution 2019-241, a resolution approving special event applications. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay.
219-230.
Mr. Manzella, come on up.
Okay, so the charge for the valet bus was $20 regarding some help from the board?
That's correct, that's what they're proposing.
And where are these parking spots gonna be, do you know? Are we taking other parking spots to use for valet, or does it need some new places that are available?
No, we're using the existing circle, you know, supply of parking that we have, so we're gonna start with the pilot just doing Benxav Garage and the Memorial Drive parking lot. As soon as we see a point where the demand is exceeding what we have available, we can talk about with our operator what other lots might be able to be used. And there are definitely other potential lots that we can expand to.
Explain the dollars to me.
Sure. So what they proposed was a $20 fee to the customer. We, the city would receive $2 off the bat for each car. The operator would retain $13 of that, and five, the remaining $5 would go to whoever owns the parking space. So when we start the program, it's all gonna be our spaces, so we'll get $7 out of all, each $20.
Okay, I think that was my... Okay, I think that was my, I wasn't sure of that, so that's fine. Lost proposal, they don't have a date.
Uh, yeah, I talked to them today about that. They have to, assuming that we award tonight, they have to hire staff and order some signage and, and their point-of-sale equipment. They think by mid-July, we could have it going.
Can we put a drop-dead date if you don't start?
Sure, yeah.
Imagine they want to do this as quick as possible.
They do, they're excited about it.
Okay, no, no, so the other company said July 4.
Yeah.
Which is probably pushing it.
Yeah, I think it was. I wasn't as comfortable with the other company, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2019-232, approving payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Uh, Councilmember Chapman is going to abstain from I-901919.
So is our motion on the middle list?
Thought we did that. Did we?
No. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Okay, we are on to resolution 2019-219, rescinding and authorizing the purchase of an ATV for the Beach Department from Mount Holly Motorsports. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-234, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a tabletop tire changer for the Department of Public Works. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to 2019-235, appointing various firms to provide affordable housing consult for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional affordable housing services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Can I move to amend that?
And that's in accordance with the discussion that happened at work session, the motion to amend, if I'm correct, would be changing this from appointing various firms to only appointing the firm of Kyle and McNess Associates to serve as affordable housing consultants for the city. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right.
That's the motion.
A motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And now we take, need to take a motion and a second and a vote on the resolution as it was amended.
Move it.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-236, a resolution authorizing change order number one for the construction of a basketball court project. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
On to resolution 2019-237, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to grant a revocable license for encroachment over certain portions of the right-of-way areas adjacent to the property located at 623 Main Street and 810 Sewell Avenue, block 2607, block 2, and authorizing city officials to execute a license agreement associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to resolution 2019-238, a resolution approving 2019-2020 liquor license renewals, and we have license number 130333008011, 1101 Ocean Avenue Venture LLC, trade name 1101 Ocean Avenue. We have license number 130333012003, Espinoza, trading as Paso Lipos. We have license number 130333044015, AP Restaurant Four, Langosta. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
I don't see Paso Lipos. It's right there. It's down there.
Yes. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution... Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're on to resolution 2019-239. Do I have a motion to table?
Move to table.
Councilmember...
What, oh, what is it?
A resolution to approve applying...
Okay, okay.
And this relates to the discussion in the executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Is that matter only listed for the next council?
We are on to resolution 2019-240, a resolution approving the 2019-2020 liquor license renewal for 130333017012, Steinback Liquor License LLC, trading as the Asbury Ale House. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to item I, ordinances. Ordinances for introduction, we have 2019-22, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to convey an easement over a certain portion of the right-of-way area, airspace adjacent to the property located at 306, AKA 308 Main Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Do I have a motion to table?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Okay, we're on to ordinance 2019-26, an ordinance amending salaries of certain employees[1636.06]